Different night than what we're accustomed to, but City Council was at the National League of Cities in DC. So I'm glad they had a safe return and a good trip and represented our city. At this time, as with every meeting, we will call the meeting to order. Item 2.0 is the invocation. We ask that Imam Abdul Hanif from the Masjid Omar B. Said, if he could come forward, we ask that all would please stand for the prayer immediately following. If we could repeat the pledge. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and distinguished guests, let us pray. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, we come before you seeking your divine guidance. In a world filled with complexities, we yearn for clarity and direction. Bless this city leadership to recognize the inherent potential within each of us. And we ask that this potential be nurtured and directed towards good. We pray that you protect their freedom to think, act, and speak with integrity, unburdened by fear or oppression. May this freedom be the foundation on which to build a better Fayetteville community rooted in justice and equality. Infuse their hearts with compassion, enabling them to understand and empathize with the suffering of others. Let this compassion drive them to act with decency and fairness. We pray for wise and righteous leadership, leaders who embody your principles and serve with humility. May their insight and vision be natural, flowing from genuine understanding and wisdom. And protected from anything artificial, fake, or phony. Shield them from temptations of power and the allure of deceit. Dear God, grant our city leadership the perseverance to stay steadfast in pursuit of ideal goals for Fayetteville even when faced with adversity. Help them remain resilient and unwavering in their commitment to creating the Fayetteville City family that reflects your love and mercy. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ameen Hanif, if you could, we thank you for joining us tonight. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself or the Masjid? I'm familiar with it, but maybe some who are watching may not be.
I'm a member of Masjid Omar Ibn Said at 2700 Merkison Road. We're an Islamic community under the leadership of Imam W. D. Muhammad, who proclaims in word and deed the universal message of Islam. There's only one God and one human family. We are in the month of Ramadan, the ninth month of the Islamic lunar calendar. This is the month of fasting where we fast from dawn until sunset. This is the month of prayer, reflection, and charity. And it marks the beginning of the revelation of the Holy Quran to Muhammad the Prophet.
But thank you so much, sir. We appreciate that. Thank you for sharing with us what you do. And thank you for the work that you all do.
We thank you for the invitation.
Yes, sir. All right, councilors, as we move forward, we have some very special recognitions that we have prepared proclamations for with the presentation. I'd like to ask Mr. Phil Harris, Executive Director of the American Red Cross, if he could meet me at the podium for special presentation.
Mr. Pickleball, how are you, sir?
That's Mr. Over the Edge, my partner and over the edge for the United Way. Come on, let's do it again. Whereas this March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Fayetteville and Cumberland County and by renewing our commitment to lend and helping hand to our neighbors in need. Since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in time of crisis. Advancing its noble mission, the volunteers, blood donors, and supporters who now give back through the Sandhills chapters are unwavering their commitment to prevent the human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. And whereas their voluntary and generous contributions sign a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting service members and veterans and their families saving lives with first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills, or delivering international aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. And whereas this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever or wherever it's needed. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of the remarkable service. And we ask everyone to join their commitment for care for one another. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, the mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council and our 208,000 residents, do hereby honorably proclaim this month of March in the year 2025 as American Red Cross Month. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand of the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this day of February 2025. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of words. Every president since FBR and every city council since I started the Red Cross 11 years ago has read that. So I appreciate that. But it's also in 1917, 158, citizens of Fayetteville came. Right there where the library is and said, we want a Red Cross. And so we're here to this day with strong volunteers. So March is when we recognize those volunteers, what we do in the community. So just give you a couple of updates. People see my red shirt. They say, you're the blood guy. Yep, I'm the blood guy. And we provide 40% of the country's blood. So we're fortunate. We have a lot of people that stepped up in Cumberland County in Fayetteville to do that. But the challenge is the Red Cross doesn't need the blood, the patients do. So we're out there in the community. And thanks to a lot of you all. We've launched our sickle cell program a couple of years ago because we know the best match is alike racial. And so you guys have stepped up. We've done Hunter Blackman. We've done the Parks and Rec Center. We've done the Omegas. We've done a lot of people that, like you, have stepped up. Other people know us for CPR. We're still doing that to this day. But now you can learn online. You learn in your phone. So we're doing that and we still have that today. Other people know us for our service on forces. We have two offices on Fort Bragg that never missed a beat during COVID. We're supporting military members and their families. And more importantly, people know us for disaster. We definitely had Matthew and Florence and Debbie and got ready for that. But our biggest disaster in Fayetteville, Cumberland County is a single-family home fire. We had 219 of those families that experienced that. So we know smoke alarms save lives. So we partnered with the City of Fayetteville Fire Department and installed those alarms because we know they save lives. So just wanted to update you. And it took a little longer than I, but we've got a good story to tell. And thank you for helping us.
Mr. Phil, thank you. And members of the Red Cross for the great work you've done. Disaster has unfortunately made its way to our community. You stepped up there. I remember working with you during the storms and you've been at it ever since. So a lot of things that you do and you don't get credit for, but we say thank you for all of that.
Call me anytime, Phil.
Yes, sir. And councilor, I'll move, I have two more presentations, then we'll roll back to the announcements. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. If you could go to the podium and Ms. Dawn Dula, Operations Manager at the Transit. If you can meet, you and your team could meet Councilmember Banks McLaughlin at the podium.
All right. Well, folks, we would like to take a moment of privilege to say thank you. And we prepared a proclamation on behalf of myself and the City Council and it reads as follows. Whereas Tuesday, March 18th, public transit systems across the country will observe Transit Driver Appreciation Day to recognize the transit drivers for their skill, hard work, customer service, and dedication to improving the quality of life in the communities they serve. Whereas the day raises awareness for frontline transit employees who safely move our community forward by connecting people to jobs, educational institutions, medical facilities, leisure activities, and to Fort Bragg. Whereas the City of Fayetteville would like to acknowledge the commitment and dedication shown by the
shown by the drivers who are required to multitask and maintain schedules, check fares, give directions, announce stops, courteously greet transit customers we serve, all while safely maneuvering an extra-large vehicle through unpredictable traffic, adverse weather conditions, and tight spaces. Whereas it is recognized that other transit employees support the transit drivers with vehicle maintenance, customer information, dispatching, and other assistance beyond the scenes to ensure that services provided every single day. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the 18th day of March 2025 to be Transit Driver Appreciation Day, and we urge all businesses, employers, citizens, educational institutions within the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County to actively participate in providing opportunities for reentering individuals to rebuild their lives. Thank you to our transit drivers. Let's give them a round of applause. So Ms. Dula, if you would, you all want to have a few words?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Dawn Dula, the Operations Manager with Transit. Thank you for recognizing Transit Driver Appreciation Day, or as we call it, TDAD. Your support and the support of city leadership has allowed our transit operators to keep the community moving. So on behalf of all transit operators and staff, we want to thank you for this recognition. And lastly, I would leave you with this. Come ride with us, we're going places.
All right, thank you all for the great work you do. Day in and day out there, regardless of conditions, emergencies, lockdowns, people depend on transportation, so thank you for what you do. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Jensen for Women's History Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I could ask all the councilwomen to meet me down at the podium, plus the women that are employees of the City of Fayetteville.
Oh, wow. Do we have anybody left in here? Doing all the work around here, huh? All right.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring it out, this has been like a tradition I think we've probably done for the past eight years, and we seem to keep growing, which is a great thing. But it's very interesting that, as I was reading the proclamation for the Red Cross, everything that goes through the Red Cross, you could say a lot about women, too. So it's just very ironic. So I think this is the first year that our mayor is going to read this to us. I'm allowing him, I'm asking him to read it for us. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I'm honored to do it. Ladies, we've prepared a proclamation just as a token of our appreciation to say thank you for all that you do, and the proclamation reads as follows. It says, whereas through history, women have played an essential role in shaping our society, making invaluable contributions in education, science, business, government, the arts, and countless other fields. Whereas Women's History Month is a time to recognize and celebrate the achievements, the resilience, and the leadership of women, both past and present, who paved the way for progress and equality. Whereas despite significant progress, women continue to face challenges in the pursuit of full equality and representation, making it essential to uplift and empower their voices in all aspects of life. Whereas the 2025 theme for Women's History Month is Moving Forward Together, Women Educating and Inspiring Generations Highlights the Continued Efforts to Honor and Advance the Contributions of Women in Our Communities and Beyond. And whereas this month serves as an opportunity to educate, inspire, encourage future generations to support gender equality and recognize the critical role women play in shaping a more just and inclusive society. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, we do hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month in the City of Fayetteville.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's proof that there's always a seat at the table, always make a seat at the table for your fellow women.
I mean, look, y'all run the table, it looks like. I mean, so ladies, we certainly appreciate it. You are the beginning of life, and just by the mere presence at the podium, it showed the significant impact that you have in our government, in the operations of it, and in the governance of it. So we thank you for your contributions to our community, and those who in the audience are watching, thank you for your contribution each and every day, and happy Women's History Month. So council, with that, I'll move to the announcements. Seeing none specific, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our Public Works Commission passed out these cards, I figured it'd be a great time for us to uplift the upcoming event. And that is our Public Works has given us a great opportunity where we can save on our utility bills by giving them a Power and Water Conservation Expo. It will be Friday, March 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Skyview at 121 Hay Street. It's free admission to all, you can come out with some goodies, and you come up with some ways that you can save on your bill. So please come out and support your local utility. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. I'm sure a lot of us are interested in saving on that bill, so we see you back there, Mr. Chairman, and former councilmember and commission chairman, Chris Davis, welcome, sir, you and CEO, Mr. Bryant. All right, council, any other announcements? Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that there was eight of us that went to DC this week. We went to the National League of Municipalities, and I really feel I want to thank everyone that went. We had two days up on the hill talking about, you know, how everything is changing real quick, and we want to thank our Assistant City Manager, Jody Phelps, that she took us up to the hill with our lobbyists, kept us in line. But I will say, as a council, I really believe that we made, we moved a lot of things, and we were known to a lot of people. It was the first time in 12 years that I've gone that we walked into a room of all the North Carolina people, and Fayetteville was shouted out, not once, but twice, by our delegation. So we are, we have arrived, they know who we are, and they also can say, we are the largest neighbor to the largest military installation in the world, and do not mess with our VA benefits. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. And then I have Councilmember Mahdros as well.
I think our Mayor Pro Tim is being a little bit modest. I think, I need everybody to recognize that our Mayor Pro Tim did a great job facilitating those meetings and putting our ass up front to let them know exactly what our needs are, because our needs are a lot different than other communities. And she just got finished stating, we are the largest neighbor to the largest military in the United States, and our needs are different. And we emphasized that, and she did a great job facilitating that. That's why I think everybody walked out there with a positive spirit and a positive inclination that we're going to get the things that we asked for. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Councilmember Mahdros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, August 4th, which is three weeks away, three weeks from tomorrow.
Say, August 4th is three weeks?
April 4th, I'm sorry. Got my wrong month. April 4th is the Woodpecker's first game, so everybody buy your tickets, they're on sale.
I was about to say, man, this year going by fast. All right, so thank you. Any other announcements, council? All right, thank you for all the announcements. Thank you, council, for doing, representing us in the nation's capital with the other cities from across the country. Thank you to all of the honorees and those who were recognized tonight. And council, with that, we will move to the agenda. Mr. Managers, anything to report? All right. Seeing none, council, we'll move to 6.0, the approval of the agenda. If we could have a motion on our sure system to approve the agenda. There is a motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember, okay, I didn't see. It was motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Banks McLaughlin to approve. Is there a discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries unanimously. Council, moving to 7.0, the public forum. Per the city council policy, 120.9, this is a time that a resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. The public forum will last no longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes each to address the city council on issues related to the City of Fayetteville. No time may be yielded or given to any other speaker. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the office of the city clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. today, on the day of the meeting. When a clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. When the light on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the light changes to red, that means your time has expired. Any speakers on the public forum list that did not have an opportunity to address the city council will have the option to have your name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forum meeting with the public forum list of speakers. With that, Madam Clerk, I'll go to you for your first speaker.
Mayor, we have 11 speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Royal Solei.
Good evening, ma'am. How are you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
I kind of came just to hope to change the narrative a little bit tonight. I came to thank each and every one of you because I've been doing a lot of work in the community. I've been reaching out to you, asking questions, Lynn, a lot of you, and you've been so helpful with me, providing information, everything that I needed, so I just came to publicly say thank you.
Well, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing in the community as well. Madam Clerk.
While he was struck by a vehicle, he was killed by the traffic engineers that designed that rate, designed that street. Owen Drive is a dangerous street for all that use it, but especially for those outside of a car. The crash that killed Mr. Hinton was no accident, it was the inevitable conclusion of dangerous street design. Owen Drive is not a drive at all. Drives are slow, short, and narrow streets, usually entrances to housing and businesses. Owen Drive is a strode, a term that was coined by Strong Towns founder Chuck Marone, and is a dangerous and inefficient combination of a street and a road. Roads are high-speed connectors between two places. Streets contain the places where people want or need to be. Streets are highly complex places with housing, businesses, parks, and other buildings. They have entrances and exits, many intersections, and most importantly, pedestrians. Due to their complex nature, streets need to be slow and narrow. Owen Drive is just one of many strods in Fayetteville, which is why, on average, 10 people die trying to cross a street in the city every year. About a third of Fayetteville residents are either too poor, too young, too old, or too disabled to drive a car. The city is hostile to them, and people like me who choose the transportation options that are better for the environment, our health, and our wallets. The bus comes once an hour and drops us off on the side of a street that is impossible to drop, to cross safely. There are major gaps in the sidewalk network, and there are no bike lanes on any major arterial or collector street in the city. This limits the mobility and productivity of those without options, and thus increases poverty and homelessness in our communities. Plus, when society shows so little respect for their less fortunate population, it is no wonder why many of them don't care about society's rules. It should be no surprise when they turn to crime or trash the streets with our litter, with their litter. About six months ago, a viral YouTube video mocked Fayetteville for being the least walkable city in the country. If I was sitting up there, I'd be embarrassed. I don't like losing, and I certainly don't like being dead last at anything. If you're okay with being dead last, I don't understand how you got up there. I don't care what motivates you to make Fayetteville a more accessible city for all, whether that's to prevent the death that you have the power to prevent, want to provide dignity and opportunities to all your constituents, or just embarrassed about being the least walkable city in America. I just care that you do it. Fayetteville is America's can-do city, and if that's the case, Fayetteville can do better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Brock.
Good evening, Mr. Brock.
Good evening, sir. Council, appreciate everyone having me today. So I, Stephen Brock, I live at 2539 Huntington Road here in Fayetteville. And tonight, I wanted to speak a little bit about the support, or lack thereof, of support going to Spring Lake and the Parks and Rec program specifically. Back in January of 2024, I immediately started organizing and trying to get a rec program going with Spring Lake Recreation, and I was told that anything that had to be done to the field needed to call Cumberland County. I called Cumberland County. Cumberland County told me that, no, you need to talk to Spring Lake Rec, they're the ones responsible for that. Went back to Spring Lake Rec, we did that for about two months. I was then called, and I was pushed over to the Parks and Rec Department, got put on a voicemail, nobody returned my phone call. March, I had a girls' softball team out there, 10-year-olds, and I had multiple girls who took a ball to the face because there's rocks and debris, and you've used fill dirt for the infield's out there. This sounds silly, but it starts with recreation, and in our long-term planning strategy is recreation is supposed to be the number one thing that Spring Lake is looking for, and I know as well as Fayetteville also has a long-term plan with recreation. I'm asking for you to please, please, put fresh infield dirt on those fields so that we can actually have a program. This may be an absolute moot point, because as I was driving here earlier today, when I was told that it has already, it has now been approved, and they're going to redo the fields, not quite sure when that timeline will be, but I was told that. I do recognize that currently they're doing the parking lot, not sure why, just because we don't have anybody that goes to the park, because they can't play on the fields. Anyways, so then what I would like to cover, being that it's being addressed, so I'm told, is that Spring Lake was not even on the area for when I registered to speak here. It asks you for your district. I put in the address for Spring Lake, and it didn't pop up. But I do recognize Mr. Davis over here, I have seen you at some of the council meetings there. So not only that, but Spring Lake was not in Fay Fix-It for parks. So all the 15 to 20 requests that I was submitting after I was kicked off the field for doing the work myself, after that, I went to Fay Fix-It, and Spring Lake is not on Fay Fix-It. And then additionally, as I'm running out of time here, I spoke with Mr. Dave Matthews. He told me he would call me back. It has now been three weeks, and I have called every single day and left a voicemail on his voice message. Mike Gibson does not answer my phone calls, and Tony Yarborough, the supervisor for the maintenance out there, says we can't have grass seed or new fertilizer because there's no irrigation.
So thank you, Mr. Brock. So I just wanted to clarify, so Fayetteville Cumberland County Parks and Rec doesn't handle Spring Lake. So Spring Lake's municipal area handles Spring Lake.
So as I'm told, sir, as of three years ago, Cumberland County falls under, or Spring Lake falls under the purview of Cumberland County Parks and Rec.
Okay, all right, so.
So that's to my point, sir.
Yeah.
A lot of the people here don't even recognize Spring Lake.
Right, well, at the end of it, I think, thank you for the information, and we will certainly pass that along, but Spring Lake does have a governmental body that meets.
Tracking.
Yeah.
And I meet with P. Anthony and the John Rory on a regular basis.
I just want to make sure we're clear on a lot of that, and which is probably why your address didn't populate, because it's Fayetteville.
No, I put in the address to the park, sir.
Okay.
In Spring Lake.
The park's in Spring Lake, right?
1774 Litter River Road.
For tonight, but I got you. All right, we'll make sure that you have proper contact with that, so make sure that someone passes Mr. Gibson, so that he at least returns his call for the county portion of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Calista Cuevas.
Good evening, Ms. Cuevas.
Hello, my name is Calista De La Cruz Cuevas, 5316 Blue Water Place. Good evening, Mayor Colvin, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, and members of the Fayetteville City Council. I'm here tonight, once again, to address the Cool Springs Downtown District policy of excluding religious and political organizations from participating. of excluding religious and political organizations from participating in Fourth Friday events. At the March 3 city council work session, it was stated that Fourth Friday's limited focus is on arts and entertainment. However, if this policy were being applied consistently, we would expect that only organizations related to arts and entertainment would be allowed to participate. Yet that is not what's happening. For years, Fayetteville Pride has been allowed to participate in every single Fourth Friday. Their focus is LGBTQ plus activism, not arts and entertainment. Planned Parenthood has also participated, even bringing their mobile bus, despite having no connection to arts or entertainment. So I asked the city council, why are some advocacy groups allowed to participate while others are banned? The issue is not that these organizations are present, but that other groups, particularly those with religious or conservative viewpoints, are being intentionally excluded. This is a clear case of selective enforcement of Cool Springs Downtown District policy, which disproportionately affects certain viewpoints while allowing others at publicly-funded events. I urge the city council to examine these policies and ensure fairness. If Fourth Friday is truly limited to arts and entertainment, then the rules should be applied equally to everyone. However, if advocacy organizations are allowed to participate, then all groups, regardless of political or religious affiliation, must be given the same opportunity. Furthermore, I am formally requesting that the city council issue a proclamation stating that Fayetteville is dedicated to upholding the First Amendment and requires that all organizations and businesses in contract with the city performing city-funded work must adhere to First Amendment protections. This is not a partisan request. This is about fundamental constitutional rights that apply to all Americans. Fayetteville is a city that values free speech, inclusivity, and fairness. It's time to ensure that those principles are upheld in all public events, especially ones funded by taxpayer dollars. I ask this council to take a stand and ensure that no organization, whether liberal, conservative, religious, or secular, are silenced or denied participation in these publicly-funded spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our next speaker is Dr. Gail Morfesus.
Good evening, ma'am. How are you doing?
My name is Gail Morfesus. I live at 404 Valley Road, and I'm very pleased to be able to speak here today. Thank you so much for your attention. I want to say first of all that even though I have a doctoral in the Performing Arts and Theater, I took it upon myself to look up what the definition is so that we start from a basis, that the performing arts event involves artistic performances such as theater, dance, music, or opera, while a cultural event celebrates or showcases aspects of culture such as festivals, traditions, and art forms. And I certainly agree with that. I want to say that sometimes in our eagerness to open the door to other groups, we actually disrespect other groups, and we have the First Amendment right to freedom of speech. Of course, we all know that. And I really just urge you, because the thing is, is that, folks, we all know, that the strength of our city, and we have a great city, but we must open it to everyone. We have a wonderful relationship with Fort Bragg, and that has caused us to have, in one year, 51 different cultures and countries march in our international parade. And therefore, all of those people should have equal rights and respect. I do want to say, and I don't mean to jump off on a personal issue, but I do want to say that I am the proud mother of two daughters and three granddaughters. One of my daughters is 34 years old now. She's Irish and African-American. I adopted her when she was a week old. I'm very proud of her. She's a great girl. But I would not expect her to be any less treated than I am. I have a great relationship with the Arts Council here. They have been wonderful to me. But I must tell you that 20 years ago, Deborah Mintz, who was a great gal, was forced to come and tell me that even though they had paid me some honorariums to perform at the Arts Council, I've been here 32 years, in the first 12 years, that they could not let me perform there anymore. And I said, why? Did I offend someone? Because I'm apt to do that too, whatever. But the thing is, is she said, no, but all of our monies are for people of color. And right away, I said to her, I'm a person of color. I'm white, and I'm not invisible yet. And I just feel that we need to, everything we do, make it equitable. Now, sometimes, down at the Fourth Friday, I've heard things that I don't feel are the performance arts or culture. For example, my dear friend over here, Mario Benevente, used to stand out there and yell through a bullhorn, and I said, oh, no, I don't want to hear any of that. But anyway, but I'm not picking on him because he's a nice guy. He's a nice, hard-nut guy. But I'm just saying, if you allow, yes, you did, honey, do I have to make pictures? I called the police. Anyway, I'm just saying that let's treat everybody the right way, and let's all live together in the all-American city, because if we include everyone, we have a great culture here. We need to make it better.
Thank you. You been standing out there yelling through a bullhorn?
They didn't let me do it. We just did it anyways.
Yeah, they wouldn't even give him a permit.
All right.
Our next speaker is Ms. Venus De La Cruz. Okay, not present. The next speaker is Mr. Alan Maloney. Not present. Next speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Mr. Cardona.
Mr. Mayor, how you doing today, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Josei Cardona. I'm losing my hair, so I took a haircut. Just a joke. Ladies and gentlemen, today I come before you to let you know that I have a problem with an organization called Downtown Cool Spring. And I told the lady that I would be talking on this matter. Cool Spring, we do have a Cool Spring, by the way. We do have a Cool Spring right behind the Mount Sinai AME Church, which is polluted, which has been there forever since 2017, I mean, 1748. And that water goes into the Little Creek River that goes down to the Cape Fear River and pollutes everybody else down Lumenton, Tar Hill, and all the people who are dying of the forever-ever chemicals from Dupont Plant, which now share more, and that the county continues to give millions of dollars to them. But anyway, this organization that's downtown has three officers, one CEO, one treasurer, and the lady that actually does the doggone things that's supposed to be done in the city to improve the health, welfare of the people for everybody. I just got here a few minutes ago, and I walked down the street, and there's some people over there who are religious people. I'm not going to mention who they are, but they always hang downtown. So if they could do it, so can anybody else, whatever problem that you have. I also have a problem with them because out of those three people, Mr. Mayor, we have 24 directors, I mean, directors in that same agency, who might not get paid. I understand that, but they put influence on the people that work there to bring the things that they bring downtown Fayetteville. I have a problem with that because most of these guys are old guys from this, from the city, realtors, you know, business owners, whatever. I count the 24, but I know one of them who was an individual that passed away. God bless his soul, Mr. Tenmore, who will always live in my heart. He was a good guy. But how many, how many, how many individuals like this does it take to screw in a label? Okay? Again, I also have the problem that if you have people coming in here from every nationality, every religion, this is our town. And like you said, we have International Ford Festival, which, by the way, has been here since the beginning of time, and since the beginning of most of you. And seven scores of 10 plus four, my age, I've been here since the beginning of time. But I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardona.
Our next speaker is Ms. Tracy Pelt Waterford.
Good evening, Ms. Waterford.
Good evening, and thank you all so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Tracy Pelt. I live at 3263 Notting Hill Road. And today, I just wanted to address the possibility of adding an addition to the Fayetteville Boards and Commissions. So if you just give me a moment, I will go through my spiel. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address you today. Fayetteville is a remarkable city, a city known for its diversity. We are professionals, mothers, fathers, beloved sons and daughters, students, and even activists. But we are also ministers of the Lord Jesus Christ, and we are politicians. This beautiful spectrum of voices reflects the strength and character of our community. Every voice is qualified to be heard, not just those that align with the most popular or polarized viewpoints. What makes our voices essential in this great can-do city of Fayetteville is not simply the values we hold, but the inherent dignity we each possess as human beings. My human dignity authorizes my voice, and it authorizes the voice of every individual in this community. Human dignity, not ideology, is the qualifier for participation in conversations that shape our city. While I can assure you that I do not align with every opinion in this room, I firmly believe that our shared dignity as creations of the Almighty God grants us all the right to be heard. Today, I humbly ask the leaders of this great city to expand their considerations beyond the loudest and the most polarized voices. When determining which groups and organizations are chosen to bear the name and the seal of Fayetteville, I ask you to remember some of the other not-so-quiet voices, the unheard perspectives, and the individuals who may not hold influence but still carry the dignity that qualifies them to take an active role in determining what we want Fayetteville to look like. Allowing religious voices to participate in Fayetteville-sponsored or connected events can only benefit us as a whole. Today, we can ensure, together, we can ensure that Fayetteville continues to thrive, not by silencing voices, but by embracing the full diversity of our community. With that being said, I would humbly ask this esteemed council to consider the addition of a faith commission to Fayetteville Boards and Commissions. Let us participate, and let us have a say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Gwendolyn Fuller.
Ms. Fuller, I didn't know that was you back there.
Hello, ma'am.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you all?
Good.
Good. I'm here for the third time to address the speeding at 463 Mcfee Drive, which is a very short street. We have all kinds of vehicles coming through there, buses that are, school buses that are speeding. We have delivery trucks that are speeding. The speed limit, I think when you come in from Rafer Road, it's 10 miles, and then on around the curve, it becomes 25, and then down the hill, it becomes 10. There's a flashing light there. Of course, I have one of my neighbors here, she decided to come with me, excuse me, also. So the majority of the neighbors that are there are residents that are there, are seniors. And I stated before, there's one lady that's about 82, 83 years old. She works in her yard. I work in my yard. Coming down the hill is a curve. Coming up the hill is a curve. If they lose control of those cars, those vehicles, there's a possibility that they are going to kill someone if not injure them. I don't want the city's money if I'm sitting on my, laying on my back and I can't enjoy it. But this, like I said, this is my third time addressing this. So we would like to know, what does the city intend to do about this?
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. I remember talking to you about it. I was trying to look at when I sent that, but Mr. Manager or someone from staff from Public Services can check that address out maybe for traffic common options. So Ms. Fuller, someone will see you in the back, I think Ms. Michelle, right at the very back.
Okay.
She'll take care of you, and Public Services will come out there and assess, see what they need to do, but I'll look for that email that I sent. I remember talking to you about it.
And I have two other, two other things.
Okay, yes, ma'am, sorry about that.
Those so-called speed bumps that they have there, that's just a toy for the children. When the car hit, it is, if any of you all have ridden the bus before, on the back of the bus, we sit at the back of the bus, and when they hit the bump, you jump up, and it's fine. That's what those speed bumps are about there. One last question. All of these vehicles riding around here with expired tags, that means they don't have any insurance. So I remember a few years ago, there was a gentleman, I can't remember if he drove from Fayetteville to Raleigh. He killed a whole family, no driver's license, no insurance, and had multiple citations. So what does the city intend to do about all of these vehicles driving on expired tags, sir?
Well, typically, we don't respond, but I will get Chief Brayden. I know we, he, we get a report each month on the traffic stops, and so I know that's a whole different conversation with some council members. It's the only reason I'm not going in any further detail, but if Chief Brayden or Joyce are back there, as they monitor your area for the speeding, they can also put some measures in place to address that.
With all due respect, I think it was about three years ago, I spoke with the chief. He was the first one I spoke with in reference to this. Thank you also, county.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fuller. So Ms. Michelle, you got her.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, good evening.
My name is Sean McMillan. I live here in Fayetteville, and I'm organizer and an advocate for community safety. More often than not, justice delayed is justice denied. I was happy to see the recent ceremony marking the opening of the Orange Street School. Seeing that took me back to memories of the summer of 2020, watching the Fayetteville activist movement demand the restoration of that school. Another historic moment was in the summer was when hundreds of us stood outside. We watched Bishop Thompson and Pastor Stackhouse enter this chamber and demand the dismantling of the slave market. I couldn't think back to that summer of calls for racial justice and reimagining community safety without remembering that fam actually demanded more than a community center. In fact, the majority of the demands they made centered independent oversight of the FPD. Nisha Hagens, Shakira McNair, Lawrence Graham, Trevor Smotherman, Kevin Grissette, Adrian Roberts, Jason Walker, Lawrence Artes, Demarcus Brody, Joshua Oxendine, Justin Lupe Saye, and Jada Johnson. This is just a partial list of those who've died locally of police homicide or in police custody. Others like Jelana Dunlap and Gerard Atkinson survived the encounters but were victims of excessive force and overreach. We can only expect this list to grow if nothing is done to independently examine the factors that led to lethal encounters and/or alleged misconduct. Days ago, the police-involved shooting of Isaiah Nichols was a sentinel event. His family is demanding transparency. His family and friends are openly wondering what we as a community will do next. Now is the time to get a process in place to improve transparency and accountability. With the Trump administration, federal government held Ben on a course towards authoritarianism and white nationalism. It's more important than ever to affirm our values, values that honor equal justice, government accountability. Justice delayed is justice denied. I urge this council to stand, to initiate development of a Sentinel Event Review, repeal the no camping ordinance that criminalizes the unhoused, restore independent oversight as a pillar of the OCS, and bring the vote, bring back the vote in support of immigrant neighbors back to the table for a yes vote. In the words of Representative Al Green, "On some issues that are matters of conscience, it is better to stand alone than not stand at all." Allow courage to invite courage. It is time to affirm shared values and work unapologetically in service to our community and in alignment with our values. We keep us safe, all of us, for none.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, thank all of our speakers. Those who had questions or needed follow-up, Ms. Michelle Roden and Chief Brayden and other members of staff are ready to answer some of those questions in more detail. All right, counsel, as we move to the consent eight-point items, entertain a motion to approve, Councilmember Benevente.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Discussion on the motion to approve consent. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, this unanimous. Those voting, moving to the reports items. 9.01 is the report from the Fayetteville Redevelopment Annual Report. 9.01 is the report from the Fayetteville Redevelopment Annual Report. See Mr. MacArthur and one of our commissioners making the way. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I bring to you the Chair of the Commission for the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission to, with the presentation for the annual report. With further ado, Chair Colley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, my apologies.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. It is our honor to present on tonight, so, make sure that... So, the purpose of the FRC, we currently are a six-member appointed, appointed by the City Council, and we have two vacant seats at this current time. Our primary citizen participation mechanism for the city's HUD funds is one of our primary responsibilities, reviewing the quarterly reports to ensure spending targets are met, as well as making recommendations on community and economic development issues. We also review and make budget or program recommendations to the City Council and help promote services through community engagement. This is a pretty accurate current list of our current members on the commission, and as I stated, we have two vacant seats. So, some of the highlights for FRC for the previous couple of years, we attended Juneteenth to share program information with the community, which was an absolute success. General Contractor Program in promotion, which we had an amazing outreach and response. Representation on the Fayetteville Cares DRC Steering Committee, as well as the promotion of the SBA Town Hall hosted by ECD. As well as engage community members during the Transforming Communities Through Economic Development Open House, which we had an amazing turnout, and we appreciate you all for, some of y'all for coming out and supporting us through that. And then we had an amazing visit to two of our sites, Cliffdale Ridge Apartments, which is an affordable housing program, and also Fayetteville Cares Day Resource Center. Our recommendations for the 2024-25 year is our HUD Annual Action Plan, which you all have seen, implementation of the new Annual Emergency Solutions Grant, our HUD Section 108 Loan Guarantee Policy, as well as our Home Buying Hero Rebranding and Expansion, which is absolutely amazing, our CDBG-funded Demolition and Clearance Policy, Single Family Housing Development Program, and Home Ownership Loan Forgiveness Program, and lastly, our Rental Housing Development Funding Awards. Our goals for this upcoming year and the years to follow is to review recommendations from ECD on the 2025-29 Consolidated Plan, review recommendations from ECD on the 2025-26 Annual Action Plan, and also review Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy in the area, NRS A. We will continue to do site visits to engage our community partners, as well as monitor the spending to ensure targets and objectives are met. And lastly, to engage the community through participation in community events, which we continuously put out announcements and put on the website and pages for our community to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, with that, I'll go to Councilmember Hare.
Mayor, if there are no questions, I move to accept the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission's report.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Davis, it looks like. I saw Handros throw the peace sign, but Davis got him on the button, so. With that motion, with the discussion, let's see, don't see any discussion. I do want to take a point too, and I'll go to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, just to thank you all and the commission for what you do. I know this is a necessary part as an accountability mechanism for HUD with these funds and our community and economic development. Derek, Mr. Colley and his team do a great job pushing it out. You know, we push a lot of people to them because folks who want to have seed investment to start businesses, people who want, or some of those most vulnerable areas in the community, that all falls under that tent. So, thank you. It is a wide net that you cast, but thank you for what you do with helping us do that. I'll go to you, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation, all the hard work that you do. I was looking, I know we'll be voting on the board and commissions, but I was wondering if we had that listed. We do have one. Okay, and is that going to be a reoccurring, is that other position, that second position isn't filled? With her two vacancies?
Well, thank you, thank you, Councilmember. What we normally do is for the ones that continue to stay vacant, staff is already working to push and make phone calls to several of the applicants to see if they were interested in filling these positions and any other positions that may be vacant, but we also will continue to re-advertise if we don't fill them from that perspective.
Okay, thank you, because I know we have quite a few vacancies, so if anybody is interested and want to be a part of helping and bettering our community, please put in for these applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. All right, so council, with that, we'll look to you for your votes on the motion to receive Who are we missing, Madam Clerk? Oh, okay, all right. So, motion carries, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, council, moving to the next report will be the PWC Annual Report. I see Mr. Chairman, former Councilmember Davis is there, I see the CEO, Mr. Bryant, I think he's, I'll let Councilmember Davis take the hot seat today, no hot seat, so this is good stuff. So, how you, sir?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing, man?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor, Council. City manager, leadership, good to see you all again, and congratulations on your trip to DC. I remember that in my time, I'm sure a lot of great things were done from you guys, so thank y'all for what y'all do for this community. As Mr. Mayor said, I'm Chris Davis, Dr. Davis, I'm Chairman of the Fayetteville Public Works Commission, and of course, I served where you are serving now for a period of time. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Dr. Davis, Chairman of the Fayetteville Public Works Commission Board of Commissioners, and I thank you for giving me an opportunity to address you all on this evening about all the good work that PWC is continuing to do for our citizens in this region. Everyone should by now have a copy of my report, as it was submitted prior to the meeting, but there's some things that I really would like to highlight in order to draw your attention to it. First and foremost, in 2024, PWC has financially committed, of course, and contributed over $25 million back to the city of Fayetteville. These financial contributions include our annual pilot, annexation costs, street lighting, storm drainage improvements. In addition, funds for supporting gateway improvements, pedestrian lighting improvements, community economic development, and RCWAM's parking debt. I would also like to highlight that in 2024, Fayetteville Public Works Commission's performance resulted in nearly two dozen industry-related awards. Importantly, PWC was one of only five utilities in the United States of America to receive the Association of Metropolitan Water Agency's Gold Award for Exceptional Utility Performance over the last year, one of five in the country. Also, PWC was recognized by the American Public Power Association for receiving the Reliable Public Power Award for the sixth time, at the American Waters Association Partnership for Safe Water Directors Award for the 24th time, highlighting our continued commitment to providing safe and reliable and affordable electric, water, and wastewater services to the Fayetteville and surrounding areas. PWC continued in its development and execution of several large-scale projects to include building two community solar sites, beginning engineering water lines to the Graves Creek Elementary Schools at no cost to our present customers, throw that out there, and started preliminary construction to the carbon filter systems at the P.O. Hoffa Water Treatment Facility. In addition, PWC is working and partnering with Fayetteville State and Fayetteville Tech, Nicole College, in support of the Department of Energy Grant to establish Fayetteville-Cumlin County Building Training and Assessment Center to create new green energy jobs. However, this project is currently on hold due to federal funding reviews, as we're all experiencing. To add, the current federal funding review is also impacting PWC's awarded grants and loans, specifically over $80.6 million. And electric, water, and wastewater awarded grants and low-interest loans are frozen. These funds are needed to install much of the advanced technology to improve our electric reliability, bolster electric system cybersecurity, construct the aforementioned granular activated carbon filtration system, the PFAS response system that we're working on, and identify and replace lead and galvanized service pipe in our community. Each of the noted projects are crucial to ensuring safe, reliable, and affordable utility services for our customers. If the federal funding support goes away, it's apparent that PWC's only option is to look at rates. Additionally, I would like to share a brief update on Phase 5 annexation. Currently, we sit at 68% complete on this project, with over 5,000 lots served, with sewer and 65 lots with water. The initial project cost was proposed at $240 million approximately. However, the number has grown to over $400 million by the time we complete this project. Over the next 10 years, we anticipate spending more than additional $183 million on the project. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the many conversations we had about everything we can possibly do as a team and our CEO to accelerate and to effectively address these issues. We're all working on that together. PWC is proud to be an anchor right here in Fayetteville. Just last week, PWC celebrated its 120th anniversary. We've been in business since 1905, and serving this community and looks forward to the next 120 years of delivering safe, reliable, and affordable electricity, water, and wastewater services to our customers. Before I go, I'd like to invite each and every one of you to our PWC tour for our Butler Warner Plant, our P.O. Hoffa Plant, and Glenville Lake Water Treatment Facilities, or our Cross Creek and Rockfish Creek Water Reclamation Facilities. These aren't sexy, but they are very important to our quality of life here. Additionally, the Power and Water Conservation Expo is coming Friday, March 28th. Thank you, councilmen, for highlighting that in your announcements. We invite you all out to be a part of what we do. We will be downtown here in Fayetteville as we facilitate the expo. Again, thank you for your opportunity to share just a little bit of the contributions we've made to our great city. We are your hometown utility. On behalf of my fellow commissioners, Richard King, Colonel Don Porter, and Ms. Rhonda Garrett, we sincerely appreciate your trust, your confidence, and your continued support and partnership as we thrive together as a community and as a city. I'll now open the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question, and a couple of questions. I do, one, appreciate you all and Mr. Bryant for the report that you gave and all of the great things that you captured in the initial opening of that, just to show how big of an asset this is. I guess I have, I want to talk about the past a bit to get to a future question. So, one, those founding fathers and the previous leadership, when they, in 19, you say just celebrated 120 years, so that was what, 1905, I guess it was founded, they had the vision to see that they needed to be able to generate their power. With that being said, as we look at what's ahead for PWC, have you started planning about sources of power generation for the community, and if so, whatever you could share about that? I know we have our arrangements with Duke. I don't want to talk about anything proprietary, but I know that you mentioned one of the Butler Warner is a power generation plant, for those that may not know, but I just want to talk about future growth, as we talk about that, talk about the infrastructure that you mentioned for the future growth, because PWC will be at the forefront of whatever this community looks like years to come. Have you all started making plans for long-term future growth plans for the city and the county?
Yes, sir. I think the first major step we made as a commission, with the support of our staff, was we hired a CEO that was forward-thinking, who understands that Fayetteville PWC is a big driver in economic development for this city and for this region. And I think that as we move forward, and if I misspeak, I'm sure he can step in and have this conversation, because we talk about this often, as we move forward, we've got to be a part of the entity that delivers a future to this region. That includes alternative forms of energy, but it also includes adding redundancy and resilience to the system we have. As we expand our infrastructure, we've got to also go back and refit our existing infrastructure. 20 years goes by fast, and since I've been on the board, these are the first conversations we've had concerning, how do you upgrade lead pipes? How do you exchange galvanized pipes? How do we address an expanding footprint and at the same time, continue to maintain an existing footprint? In terms of power generation, there are a lot of different decisions that are going to be made as we move into the next couple of years. You know, we are part of the Duke LNG Power Agreement, as we addressed what that agreement with them looks like. I'm hopeful that Fayetteville will continue, PWC, to take a lead position in being the center of a power generation core in this region. And we are part of electricities, and again, I don't want to overspeak, but those conversations are taking place about how we might be really strong in power generation in this region. And that's something that will bolster economic development. We've got a titanium plant coming, and a lot of other, you know, plants coming and facilities coming, and in order for that to happen, data center, all the big things that are on the tip of the spear. Data power is big, you need more energy. So, how do we create that robust grid of electric support, as well as continue to support our water issues and the things that we're addressing? How do you do that? It's about investment. And so, you've had conversations with our CEO, your managers, we were talking about, how can we go big and land a plane? I've heard that from both of you guys a lot. And so, as Chair, I'm on board, and I think the sooner we get together with the leadership from the city, the county, and PWC, about how do we go big and land a plane and put it in writing and start on, I think we can really succeed in it.
Yeah, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Councilmember Thompson, the liaison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I was ready to receive the report, but now I just want to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, because our Chair, Mr. Davis, talked about us moving together. And as Mayor Potem so eloquently said, that while we were in DC, we talked to our state representative, Mr. McCloskey, and he was giving us some information about how the county was there last week, or the week prior to us, and he regurgitated some of the things that they had asked for, which is in purview of what you're asking for. So, I wanted to state that as long as we're moving forward together as a county, as a city, as the PWC, with the same voice, with the same sound, saying the same thing, I think we can also move forward and make this a better city than what it is today. So, I want to thank PWC, I want to thank the CEO for all the great work they're doing. I'm thankful that we're looking forward and not always looking behind, so we can continue to move forward. So, on that, Mr. Mayor, Bush, have we approved the report?
All right, did have a couple more. Okay, so we'll get to second, I'll come to Councilmember Green, and then I see Handros, I don't know if that was for a second, that was for a second. So, motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Handros, and I'll go to Councilmember Green.
I just had a comment. When I served as a commissioner, we were discussing things such as inner basin water transfers, because that was one of the timeframes that none of those had really been requested, and we kind of navigated our way through that, and then it was updating streetlights, because they were all of the old, I guess they were fluorescent of some type.
They were LED base, yes, ma'am.
To the LED, and I know that it's an ongoing process, because it's expensive. And then we, you know, we had to also put in, start beginning the process of new meters, and them being digital. So, with all that being said, I always want to thank PWC every opportunity I get for being forward-thinking, because they really have been, they're the trendsetters, honestly, around the state as far as utilities go. And I just applaud all continuously, you work with a great staff, and the commissioners themselves have always really worked together and been like-minded to move our city forward, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, councilwoman. Having sat on both sides as you have now.
Yes.
You understand the hard work that goes into forward-thinking and updating and upgrading the system as we expanded, so thank you for those comments.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we had a motion on the floor, we've had discussion, council, I'll look to you for action to receive the PWC Annual Report. Oh, I see that. All right, so that's vote unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Bryant, keep up the good work, guys, thank you. All right, council, moving to item 10.01, I know we had dinner discussion, entertain a motion maybe to table until next meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's see, Councilmember Green, is that?
I'll make a motion that we table this until the March 24th meeting.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Green, is there a second? Councilmember Hare? Councilmember Hare, discussion on the motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes on 10.01's tabling. All right, who are we missing? Well, we've got, oh, there's one against, okay. So, Councilman Handros, and opposition is eight to one. Thank you, motion carries, and we'll look for that next meeting. 10.02 is the Appointments Commission. I'll go to Chairman, Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Before I move forward, let me introduce the members of our board, which are Councilmembers Handros, Thompson, Mayor Protem, Jensen, and myself as Chair. This evening, council, we will be making a recommendation of 41 appointments to 17 City of Fayetteville Boards and Commissions for your approval. I will first start with our Airport Commission. And we are recommending Mr. Dwight Thompson, Karen E. Hart, Lee Beavers, and Liz Marie Handros for our Board of Appeals. Ms., well, Nicole Wright for our Community Police Advisory Board, Alvin Chestnut, Daniel Traversy, and Richard Chandler, Sr. for our Ethics Commission. Dr. Kerry Cameron, Charles Taylor, Malina Shorter, Robert Hamby, and Stephanie Huston for our Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit, FAT, Najina Shelton, and we have, still have two vacancies. And as I stated earlier, what we are doing, as previously stated, our staff will continue to circulate those, have phone calls with folk that have filled out applications and see if they're interested in serving on some of our vacant boards, if they did not get the board that they were initially requested. Fair Housing, Paul Hudson, Fayetteville Next Commission, Bradley Williams, Brittany Tishika, Crystal Childress, Kayla Bradley, Marcus Turner, Michael Austin, Jr., Nathan Coffey, and Sylvia Glaton for our Historical Resource Commission. The nominees are Gwinnon Shelby, Joshua Choi, and Michael Hawk with one vacancy, or Michael Hope with one vacancy. Human Relations Commission, Demetra Murphy. Our Lineal Park, Jimmy Regans, and that still leaves with one vacancy. Our North Carolina Firefighters Relief Board, Mr. Richard Bradshaw. Our Personnel Review Board, Roderick Gooden, Sr., with the, you know, with those following vacancies. Our Planning Commission, Mr. Joe Connor, Larry Marshall, and that leaves us with one vacancy. Our Public Arts Commission, Katie Allen, with, we still have two vacancies left on that commission. Our Redevelopment Commission, which we just received a report from tonight. We have one nominee, and that is Nicole Wright in a partial term. Stormwater Advisory Board, Chester Ramagost, Jr., Edward Granis, Joseph Holochak, and Lori Lender. Is that all? And our final board members for nominees, nomination is Justin Herbie, Rajendra Shea, and we have a vacancy there. Before I call for a motion, Mr. Mayor, to accept these members as our new board and commission members, once again, for those of you that may be interested that are listening to us tonight virtually or even in this room, we have several boards that are, continue to have vacancies. Please reach out to our staff. Some of them will, will probably go back and put those vacancies up for, to be advertised. And so, the Board and Commissions vacancies are still open for those that are looking for, to volunteer on our boards. And all of those boards, if I can say, as just stated with the ones that came to us tonight, they eventually come to us, give reports, meet whatever the objectives they are to the full board. So, they're not just there, they are really, really working, and we totally appreciate what they do. So, Mayor, at this time, I'm asking for us to receive the names and nominations for the Appointment Committees for our Boards and Commissions.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hare. There is, is that a form of a motion?
Oh, yes, sir. That is the form of a motion. I move, sir.
All right, is a motion by Councilmember Hare. Is there a second? That's Councilmember Davis on the second. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Thompson. Okay, all right. She had a question?
I'm discussing.
All right, discussion phase.
So, on some of the names, they have alternate and some say partial. Can the committee explain what these actually mean for those that were selected? They have alternate beside their names and one has partial term. I know partial term is, but the alternate maybe people don't understand.
Some of them, the, the partial, they are, if I'm not mistaken, they are fulfilling a leftover term of someone that asked to be removed. What was your other question? The alternate, that setup where, and, and committee, correct me if I'm wrong, if there is someone that is vacant at a particular meeting and the alternate is there, so that they would have a quorum, there's someone in place so that meeting can continue. So, that's the purpose of the alternate. Okay, all right.
All right, is a motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Davis. We've had discussion, council, I'll look to you for your votes to receive the recommendation of committee. All right.
That's good.
We're missing, we've had two. Who abstained? Oh, oh, is that a conflict?
Mayor Colvin, it's not a conflict, but he doesn't feel comfortable voting on his, his own wife's.
Yeah, I thought we had discussed that, right? Okay.
Well, procedurally, is abstaining an option?
Technically, no. He has a duty to vote. There's no financial conflict and.
Which board is that?
Airport Commission, sir.
So, wait, okay, council, hold, hold, hold. So, this is Councilmember's, Handros's statutory duty. Now, if you vote against your wife, you're going to sleep outside. Vote for. So, you got a tough spot, my friend, but.
A humbly request that we just pull that name and y'all can vote on it separately.
Right.
You still will be obliged to vote unless you're voting to him. To be recused, and she's saying it doesn't meet the criteria for that. Look, we, we know you've been very ethical, sir, but there's no, no financial gain. But you want to vote against her, then you have to explain to her, not us, so.
Mayor Colvin, can I, can I make it?
Yes, sir.
Never mind, he chose his vote.
Okay, all right. Motion carries unanimous. Zadino will get to sleep in the bedroom tonight. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, good job, Appointments Committee. All right, and I think we've discussed 11 on one. They'll get back with us on additional information. All right, council, motion adjourned? All right, have a good evening. Go watch some basketball.